Welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting. Today is Monday, October 7th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being recorded. Your voice and image will be on the interweb forever and ever. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:32. First up, approval of minutes.
There are none.
There are none, so...
I was gonna say, I don't think there were.
Alright, so we will hold anything till our next meeting. General public comment? Come on, we got like a lot of people in the back. Nothing, look, and here comes another one, alright. So, we have no general public comments, so we are a couple minutes late. Our first hearing appointment and presentation is to talk about the electric vehicle charging station grant, so come on down, introduce yourself, make sure you pull the mic nice and close so that people here, here, and those watching on playback can hear you.
Hi, I'm Corinne Gustafson.
I'm Peter Hoffman.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Alright, so, what would you like to chat with us about tonight?
So, Corinne's been spearheading this project, and she's one of the brains of the operation, so let's have Corinne do her thing.
No pressure, Corinne, at all.
No, I, yeah. Well, I know you've seen the presentation a few times now, so I'm here really now, at this point, to answer questions if you have any, any information I can add.
Did you see the presentation?
Well, I'm looking at it in here in line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, the big goal here is to get our place in line. If the Select Board's inclined to like the idea of getting electric chargers, and we'll iron out the kinks, whatever they may be, and whatever the Board decides to ask us to do afterwards, but right now, having been to the Energy Committee meeting last week, and there was, there were two National Grid representatives which happened to have been the right people there, and they advised us to get in line if the Board, if the town's inclined to pursue this. And what I mean by get in line is file the application.
Right.
We're not obligated to follow through, but it'll take some time to get your input, to get National Grid's input, to get the approval, and then iron all the kinks out of it.
So, have you chatted with fire and police who just happened to be behind us tonight?
They said, they said, "No way."
Excellent, well done, alright. Thank you for coming, it's a pleasure seeing you, take care, that be all it is.
Yeah, so, traffic, fire, DPW, police, and energy, and planning, and EDC have given us a thumbs up.
What about church and input from neighbors, since I'm seeing pole number two, which is directly across from a driveway?
So, we're revising it, and we're gonna suggest that it be put right at the corner, pole number one.
It's actually, I rode my bike faster, and it's actually pole number three, so I just arbitrarily named it one, from one end to the other, but it's, pole number three is at 62 and Woodward, so...
That gets it more closer to commercial activity, away from residences, and away from the church. We'll pursue the butters and the other stakeholders that the Board directs us to pursue after this, if you, if you decide to pursue this.
And then, and I get all my sort of plug types confused, and so, this is just a regular, this is not what's considered a fast charger.
No, it is, DFC.
Okay.
Yep. So, it's equivalent to what's up at Panera Bread.
Okay. And then, would there, it's part of the ChargePoint network, but is it, so people would pay for it, or it would be free to, for users?
No, so, the town would decide what the charge would be, and...
Okay.
Yep, so...
This entire project should be cost-free for the first...
I get this, whether or not we're applying for the grants, what we're deciding today, because sort of there are details, and so, it sounds like then the cost and how that revenue then gets split is something that would have to be decided?
Yeah, yep.
This should be cost-free to the town for the first five years, both the use and the installation, the capital expenditure.
Yeah, the, that makes me happy that there's no cost to the town of that part, and the five years as maintenance, then, like someone hits it or breaks it, that's also sort of taken care of by ChargePoint?
I don't think we know that.
I think the five years is for the plan, the cloud plan, and the, you know, the panel, and being on the, on the grid, so that people can use their apps and find it, know what you charge, decide if they're gonna go there, and the maintenance upkeep. So, five, yeah, the first five years are paid for, you decide what you want to charge. I know that the Bolden Fire Department charges 60 cents per kilowatt hour, Panera Bread charges 42 cents, I know my last electric bill at home was 31 cents, so EV chargers, you know, people with EV vehicle, cars, electric vehicles, sorry, I'm being retarded, you know, it's cheaper to charge at home, but there's lots of times you're out, you're on your way somewhere, you need to stop and top up, or you're, so you're not gonna choose these places, you're not gonna hang out there, it's not a destination, it's more commuters are gonna use us on their way somewhere where they need to, like I said, top up.
Right, and for, I mean, you folks know, but people at home watching, I've had only electric vehicles for about eight years, and so I, and ChargePoint is one of the places I'm a member of, and use them, you're right, the rates do vary specifically, although the reason that some places do it is, I do alter my course sometimes, and alter where I'm staying based on where chargers happen to be, and a lot of times they're free, sometimes they're inexpensive, sometimes they're more expensive than what I charge at home, when I charge at home, but I was gonna give examples of places I charge, maybe I don't want to advertise all the places where I get my free charging, but, but it is, I mean, it does drive some economic activity. I think there's some questions still to, from my standpoint, some questions I'd follow up on, but I would support the grant and figure out that we deal with, again, costs and maintenance, other stuff, if we happen to be lucky enough to get the grant. I think it will have some people who will stop in the center of town for short periods of time, and will then, you know, especially...
Buy a sandwich.
Buy a sandwich while they're waiting, I mean, most of the time when I'm charging, that's the first thing I look for, is there a place that I can grab a quick soda or a quick sandwich, and so I think it will drive some of that out. There'll be people who will be more inclined to come to some town events, because usually when I'm going to an event, again, I keep wanting to give examples, and I don't want to advertise to other people, but I've gone to events that I've been able to find charging nearby, and sometimes happy that my parking is better and easier. I'd have some concerns about how it sort of interacts with the complete streets, it does, you know, would take away some parking spaces in an area that has some limited parking, but as a whole, I would, I'd love to support this grant and figure out, we'll figure out a way to make it work if we, again, get lucky enough to get the grant.
So, yeah, Kristen, I was gonna ask, I mean, you in chief and chief are here for the complete streets, so whatever feedback you have on this would be great to share.
Yep, so, I did have concerns with regard to the complete streets project, which is going to redo essentially the, I call it the little triangle of streets that surrounds the church and includes the parking that goes along the left-hand side, so what I did was reach out to our consultant engineering firm who is designing the complete streets project, and the concern was that perhaps the sidewalk that's going along Bullard in 1870 might shift the road slightly to the right, so we did have the opportunity to ask National Grid if we did need to shift it by the width of a sidewalk, which is about four feet, according to Tim Wysocki, which sounds about right, would that be an issue? And they said, "No." If we wanted to move it to perhaps a different location, that might be a problem, but small changes such as that would not be an issue, and they did encourage us to, as Peter and Corinne said, to get that application in, because the funding is drying up. So, given the fact that I don't have that concern about complete streets, and I know the chiefs and I were speaking about a ADA parking concern, but I believe there's some recent information that just came in from Central Mass Regional Planning.
Well, the information is the fact that the state...
You realize you're not gonna be heard if you stay back there.
Can you come up?
You have to come up, sorry.
The information that we got is that there is no current federal or state EDA regulation guidelines behind them, however, expect them to come down the road.
So, it'd be best to prepare for it upfront?
I mean, that's what I would suggest, I mean, it'd be nothing worse than installing a hundred thousand dollar charger and having to pay 50,000 to tear it up and put it back down again.
Right, so we did plan to have two, two parking spaces would be the charging ports, and a third one would be accessible for...
Yeah, so, so basically, like the way they're talking, everybody's gonna park at an angle, they're saying the ADA spot, you should be able to pull in and pull out, you know, not, not have to back out, you should be able to pull in and pull out, it has to be accessible all 360 degrees, and as Mr. Hawkins knows, not all vehicles have the same charging port in the same location.
Oh, kinda like your gas tank.
Yeah, yes, you see the front, the back, could be the right side, left side, so, you know, that was just a concern, they did just send us an email a few minutes ago with a recommendation of a design, which I can't open up on my phone, but I think there's such a push to put these EV stations in, we're putting the cart before the horse, yeah, because like I said, you know, I truly believe we should have an ADA compliant, even if the regulation isn't in right now, we know as human beings that it is coming, so we should absolutely, at least have one.
So, the, the ADA compliant parking would be the first one?
I'd probably say, looking at this, I'd probably say the last, and be able to pull in, like, parallel with it, and be able to get out and move around your vehicle, and be able to take the cord and plug your car in.
Okay, so it just wouldn't be going in at an angle it would be going?
Yeah, 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 rumor, it's not fact yet, they don't want you to back out, or they want you to be able to pull in and pull out without having to back out.
But if the other two are there, well, that's why you'd have to put them in?
Just have to space it, space it out appropriately.
Yeah.
But, you know, like I said, it's not, it's not there yet, the guideline's not sitting on us, but I think it would obviously be responsible of us to make sure that we are ahead of the bell curve and get it done.
Yeah, so if the three of us are parking spaces, Scott's the ADA one, or he can do it, that way.
Yeah. There's very few of those that exist now.
Yeah, I mean...
I try to avoid them when I'm there, because I don't need them, but I do recognize where they're at when I...
Yeah, I mean, you know, on the northwest side, I mean, obviously, that's where the road gets narrower, so that'd probably be a good spot to go parallel.
And again, this is something we can iron out over time, as...
Yeah, I think the point is that we, if we apply for the grant and we get it, we don't necessarily have to go through with it, and we do have some time to figure out where exactly we want it, how we want to configure it, but the point, I guess, that we're concerned about is using, applying for it and getting the grant before the funds run out.
Yeah.
So, the total cost is 140?
That's the total grant?
Yep.
Up to that, they may not pay all of that, so once we put in the grant, they will come back with us and say how much they're gonna cover, they may not cover some of the signs, but they should cover installation and the units, which is the most expensive part.
And bollards, for some reason they don't cover bollards.
Cover what?
Bollards, sure.
The pins, protective pins?
Yeah, the, just like we have out in front of the fire station, those yellow, those are bollards.
Just so the cars don't...
They're concrete-filled, steel posts.
So, you don't crash into it?
Yeah.
I think you're probably speaking a different language for some people that might be listening.
I've been accused of that before.
He had a good description of it.
I've been accused of that before.
It's a crash barrier, same thing they have out...
Think of it as a Jersey barrier.
Yeah, yeah, it's steel tubes filled with...
Yellow posts, he said the yellow things that have concrete in them.
Yellow posts.
Yep.
And apparently you can make them green if you want to blend in nicer, so, but still, you know...
Yeah, you see them around Verizon boxes as well, Verizon Junction boxes and other places.
We have some right out in front of the station here.
Yeah.
That's what he just said, yeah.
And we're pretty confident that this is within the right of way, because it's only five feet by 10 feet. Pretty five feet by 10.
Yeah, so five feet deep, so from the curb onto the grass, which would be the church side of the property, but within the right of way of 40 feet, so it's five feet deep, and then across would be 15 for the three units.
So, the first time I heard about, thinking about doing EV charging was here, in the parking lot here, what happened to that idea?
We didn't propose that.
I know you didn't, I just, you hadn't heard about it?
No, I think the difference is, it's coming from the economic development community trying to drive economics, and something that's trying to be a town service in the town building.
Well, as I mentioned, as I mentioned to Energy, or to the folks in the meeting, we can make multiple applications, if the Board's inclined to put some elsewhere, like this building or whatever, it's, it's, it's up to, it's up to you.
Well, and the other thing that I noticed this week, because I happen to be down in Auburn, was that the Auburn Mall has about, I don't know, a dozen or 15...
Solomon Pond has several.
Right, I mean, right at lining the outskirts of the parking lot, which would be something
that might interest Solomon Pond.
Yeah, so Solomon Pond, yeah, Solomon Pond already has some there, they tend to be, actually, they tend to be quite busy, yes.
And they're free, so you can never get one.
Right.
So, what we're proposing is that the town is selling electricity to people who are commuting, going, you know, passing from 117 through 62, 6495.
They tend to be longer waits for your ones.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And the Select Board's gonna have to direct someone to be the liaison for the charging station, monitor it, make decisions, maybe it'll be Kristen.
Probably be accounting, but yes, there is a system through ChargePoint that does track, and basically, the money, they give you a report, and it just needs to be moved into an account, it can be typically a revolving fund is set up, so that you can use the proceeds that you receive through the ChargePoint to offset perhaps electricity in that area, and ChargePoint is actually a very simple system to use, and the way we did it was, we looked at kind of what the average cost was of charging stations in the area, and we lowered ours by about five cents, so we were a little bit more competitive.
My intention is not for the town to make this a profit center, but to make it a convenience, so I would be inclined to follow the model that Kristen mentioned.
And maybe put it in funds, so that after the five years that we, is gonna be paid for upfront, then we have funds to renew the contract, and that will have come from what the revenue generated in the first five years.
That is an even better idea, actually, because we have to find that annual cost after five years, so that's something that just has to be kept in mind.
Right. Well, these are all the questions that will come up, we'll make a laundry list of them.
And the main, the huge cost upfront is the units themselves and installing it, so after that, the maintenance upkeep, the cloud software, that's minor compared to actually getting them installed.
Any other questions? I mean, Scott, you're really the electric vehicle guy.
I think this is, because I think this is a benefit for the town and some of the economic development, and because I think this is a, we have to hit before the funds potentially are gone as well, I'd like to make the motion that we actually proceed with this grant, understanding that if we get the grant, there'll be some details to still work out, you know, whether or not one of the, one of the poles is closer to 19 Carter, you know, or not, but, but I think these are, are, again, tiny details to work out, like the rate of electricity, that we would work out as we went through that course when we got the grant, and I think when we have the grant, there'll be a lot of incentive to like, make sure we figure out a solution that, that is amenable to everyone who's involved.
I will second that, as long as you will explain to me how the cloud has anything to do with this.
It's those things...
Without making me feel stupid.
It's just for everything's good for data.
Well, it's, in some respects, ChargePoint is a, is a system, and so it's, for its members, you can, it's how it knows who you are and how much to charge you, I belong to, right, I belong to three different...
So, you have to, you have to be a member in order to charge your car?
Yeah, well, I think Charge, well, I've been a ChargePoint for a member for so long, I have no idea, but I believe ChargePoint is free to get into, and it just, ChargePoint just tracks you. Some of the others charge you annual fees to get you lower costs when you're at the, at the place, one of the cars I purchased came with three years of a particular network that we're currently using, and, you know, potentially might buy into that network later on, that car goes to just that network.
I'm sure I'm not the only one.
But, but that's what the sort of the cloud is, is basically, they maintain the users, they help the, the, the charge processing, the calculations of all those other things, that's what sort of a lot of it does out in the cloud.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, off you go.
There we go, thank you very much, I look forward to seeing some charge in the center of town.
We'll work with Kristen to iron out the details.
Yep, come back as needed, we're here.
At some point, they'll do a car show in the center of town, I'll be able to bring my electric car, and it'll be part of the car show, charging while it's a part of the show.
If the, if the Chair, if the Board is comfortable with it, depending on when they have the application prepared, and since we're meeting twice a month, it might be helpful to have a vote to authorize me to sign that grant application when it's ready to go in, if the Board is so amenable.
I agree with that.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, Kristen, sign away as you...
And if you have things that you feel that maybe we don't understand or know about, you might want to come and let us know?
Sure, I can put it in my...
If there are questions that...
But, yeah, you can just come by the office then, and we can get that signed.
I make a motion to double Corinne's pay.
Absolutely. Hey, would you like a snack? Here you go, you're all set.
We'll let her use the charging station for a few times.
I'll be a test user.
You can be our test user.
You're too generous.
Awesome, thank you both.
Thank you.
Alright, well, I saw Dr. Crane sneak in, where'd she go?
She'll be down the hall.
Alright, can you lean out and give her a yell?
I can do that.
Because up next, we have the joint meeting, don't go too far, I mean, you, you don't have to stay there, but don't go too far, so next up is our joint meeting with Capital Planning to talk about the use of town facilities with a focus on old fire and former rescue buildings. I see that Fia's a highly active back...
Oh. Fia is a teenager right now, so she's sowing her oats.
As long as it's not a helicopter.
That's right, yeah, then she's afraid.
Better than thunder.
I have to say, while we're waiting, that the Chief made my sister's day, so my sister was about seven when the movie 101 Dalmatians came out, and was completely obsessed with that movie, and had the stuffed animals and the posters and everything, so he let her walk around with Fia at the open house, and absolutely made her childhood dream of having a Dalmatian puppy come true.
So, that's all with, hey, you know what, sometimes it's just the little things.
It's the little things, but that's what matters.
We messed up traffic so bad.
Hello, Capital Planning, don't sit down, because you're coming up to the front. I'll wait for Dr. Crane.
Nice to see you all again.
Hello, hello.
Welcome.
Hello.
Dr. Crane, are you all, your meetings all open and stuff, or do you need to open it here for us?
No, no, I opened it in the other room.
Okay.
And we had a brief acknowledgement of there's nothing going on at the moment. So, we talked about Iceland and the Aurora.
There you go, that was the easiest 15 minutes of a meeting that you folks can ever have.
Yep, it was great.
Mm-hmm, alright, well, thank you for coming, lovely to see all of you, it's been a while, so, we wanted to talk to you, get some input on some of the future use of the town facilities, as you know, you all saw the facilities reports far too long ago, with that, where we had a third party come in, take a look at all the buildings, give us their assessment on condition, cost to fix, keep it as is, et cetera, so we wanted to talk to you tonight, really about two, two of the buildings, the old fire station and former rescue, get your input, we have the chiefs in the back, you know, to give us their input as well, I have the reports up if anybody needs them, I mean, with that introduction, Kristen, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think we have kind of narrowed our focus to a few buildings at a time, because obviously, this takes a fairly extensive amount of time to go through, and the Select Board has been mostly discussing the old fire station and the rescue building, as well as we had some Legion Hall discussion, too, which actually Habitat for Humanity has expressed some potential interest in, so there's some conversations going on around there, and with connection to the Affordable Housing Trust, who is looking at town-owned properties, and may bring forward a proposal at one of the upcoming town meetings, so, I think, you know, the purpose of that facility study was to really look at which buildings were worth investing in, and which buildings would put us upside down if we put any more money into them, and so, I will turn it back to you, Peg, I think that the Board hasn't taken a formal vote on this by any means, there's just been a little bit of discussion, and then obviously wanting to bring capital to the table.
Thank you, I mean, and unfortunately, for those watching and will watch, you know, we don't have the reports up, but they are out online, correct? They're on the Town of Berlin site, so if people wanted to...
I do believe so, and I can pull them, anything up that you want, I have them in the drive.
Yeah, I mean, probably take a building at a time, and we'll just take the first one going down the street, so that's the old fire station.
Okay, I'll bring that up.
So, Scott, Chris, thoughts, your thoughts on those buildings, keep them, fix them, take them down?
No, my thoughts have been clear, I, I'm believing that, that both of them, from a capital, especially a capital standpoint, a use standpoint, they're just, they've lived there through their useful life. Sorry, I believe that both have lived through their useful lives, and probably best if we got our fire department sort of an access directly to Route 62, and potentially took both of them down and replaced with a, a driveway that let them get out to the highway much faster. I think that we would definitely, you've raised this a couple times, Chris, but have to think about what we would do for storage, because there's some things stored there that probably have to find other homes, but as buildings, the amount of work they take for what they're useful, what they could be used for is just really not there.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we need to just sort of designate one of the buildings as a place that people can store things, multiple, multiple groups have things they would like to store.
Right, so even if we, even if we took out those buildings, that, we might end up with another building somewhere else we have to buy or build specifically for storage.
Yeah, and I don't think that either of these buildings are suitable for that, if you look at studies, it talks about the excessive masonry walls and concrete foundation have cracks throughout, badly deteriorated asphalt parking, infrastructure components are aged and degraded, unoccupied for 20 years, plumbing electrical structures need to be fixed, HVAC, oil-fired furnaces, fire alarm are all need in replacement, Lax, it's kind of funny, the old fire station lacks a fire suppressant system, and Mike, I believe at one time you had indicated that if those buildings ever go, and if there's no one in there, you're standing back and watching them go.
Yeah, Mike, committee personnel need to the building, correct?
Okay.
I guess the question comes is, we already have money approved for the roof, that's a, that's already approved.
Right.
$50,000.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that building, my, my understanding is first, you got wetlands behind the building, so you'd have to get conservation to do, the little wetlands, am I correct, behind that building, a little stream?
I think it's like off the, like, not...
But I'm sure there is, but anyways.
You have a rushing mind, there is.
Yeah, but so, if, if there is, you gotta go through Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm.
I feel as if the building can be rehab for a reasonable amount of money, but have a use, that's the big question, have a use, if it doesn't have a use, in my opinion, because we gotta be paying insurance on them.
Yep.
So...
So, we know what it costs to take them down?
We have a ballpark-ish.
Do we know what it costs to repair?
Probably cost more to take them down than it does to fix them.
For three years, there's a...
That's what I'm asking, I guess.
At the three-year mark, there's an estimated cost of, we'll do peg math, we'll round up for $400,000, the cost right now is 395, 200, that was a year ago, factor in inflation...
Well, so, that's, that's the cost of fix.
Oh.
That's the cost of fix.
How much to tear it down?
Forty-ish.
For both of the buildings, 42.
But that's okay, yeah, no, it's, that's my opinion, I mean, we have no use for it.
The rest of the capital planning input?
I'd like to see what other departments need for use, I'm thinking 25 or 50 years down the road, this will be the... This will be the go-to old days. It's just the way it is.
Yep.
So if I may through the chair, unfortunately that building not only has a roof issue, the heating system would need to be replaced, and there are some structural deficiencies in that building as well. I don't know if you can see, I was trying to make it big enough, I know folks online can see, but what the facility study does is they do a cost-benefit analysis, basically, and anything that is thirty percent or above the, what they call the facility condition index, so that would be the cost of upgrading the building versus the value of the building. Anything above that, they say it's reached its end of life, or, you know, end of useful or serviceable life. So right now the building would need at least fifty-eight thousand, three hundred going into it, that's the roof estimate immediately. That doesn't take into account the systems or potential structural issues. So when you bring that in, you're looking at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars by year three, which puts you upside down, because then your FCI is at forty-two point four. So it's just not cost-effective to keep that building, and it's going to continue to deteriorate over the years. So they make a recommendation that you basically put that money if you need a facility for some reason, which we have one here, so we don't have that need, but if we did have that need, that money is better spent to put into a new building.
If you go to page six, it starts to break down so that people can see, and it did, it does give a recommendation of an approximate cost. Foundation seventeen thousand, exterior walls five thousand. The roof, we already know, exterior walls, another thirty-five thousand, windows, round up five thousand, storage tank, round up three thousand, exterior walls twenty-one thousand, I mean, so does the town truly have, does the town truly have capital planning, money for us to put that much into a building, because in about ten minutes, we're going to go right down the street to the old Rudolph building, the rescue building, and many of the costs that you see here will also be with that building as well.
What would it, would the town DPW be able to construct the road to the fire station, or would that have to be cost out, you know? Is that something that can be done in-house, or does that have to be found out?
Potentially part of it, I would have to have that discussion with Fred. Depends on, at least the cost of materials we'd have to look at with procurement laws, do we have to put at least that out to bid? But I would think, given the equipment that they have, they potentially could.
It's a lot cheaper than the four hundred thousand dollars, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is too, is that I'm sure they could probably take it, we're taking the building down just for conversation, that they could probably get the driveway up to the road, but then I'm sure if any road reconfiguration or the lights would be a separate project for fire and/or police to be able to sit inside here and go doink, and turn the light so that people don't come through, so I see those as all separate projects. Building, one, paving up to the road, two, any road configuration, three, lights, signage, four. So, but that's, that's how I think.
No, I'm not far off, I think we can make a decision to remove the building with an idea that it might become a driveway for, for this building, or for police and fire, sorry, it wouldn't be, I don't imagine a regular driveway, but, but that could be a decision as, as we go forward. That one of the reasons I don't think it's overly usable as a building too, is that even if there was another use, that's not a safe building to drive in and out of, park out of, it's just not a safe place to, I think, have a lot of traffic. And so there are, people have run a couple of ideas of, you know, private businesses there, and I just, I don't think it would be a great place for, for private business that would have any, any sense of traffic to it.
And there's also an ADA issue, you can't get up to the second floor. So you basically have, excuse me, two bays, and that's it, with cracked cement.
Looking at all this cost, I think just take the building down.
What about resale value, is there any?
Not when it's going to be upside down in three years. I, I mean, I would really, the other issue is it doesn't look that great from the outside, so if you're trying to market it and it appears blighted, that's a challenge too, from a real estate perspective. You could try to do an auction, but typically you're going to sell the land with it then as well, which eliminates our opportunity for that potential future use and getting out on the driveway and the road.
And both combined land is, is under an acre, it's like point seven-nine or seven-five or something like that. So you're not talking gigantic spaces for gigantic parking, and that's a really bad corner as is.
Has that been discussed with the traffic study for the center of the town?
Are you talking about the corridor, the Route 62 corridor study, or the, the complete street study? It's not part of complete streets, but.
It's just too far outside of the center of town for complete streets?
It, well, there are, it is one of the projects on the complete streets list, but it is not the one that was applied for and that we received the funding for, it wasn't the highest project on that list. So we could potentially apply for and receive future complete streets money for it. We did have good luck this time around, so fingers crossed, maybe we could get some more. We've got to get this project done first, though.
I always think as it comes to auctioning the property or even selling the property, again, it, I don't think, I personally, and I've not talked about it, but as a safe spot for, for a business to be, to have cargo, I think there's other buildings we have in town that it would be more controversial to sell, but, but that might have some commercial ability and actually have some value if a real estate agent tried to list it or we tried to auction it off.
Right, well, in, in, oh, sorry, I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but an interesting point to note is that of the vacant buildings we have right now, the most structurally sound building that needs the least work, believe it or not, is the old highway building, according to the study. The problem with that building is there's no water, it was temporarily shared with the adjacent property owner, so you'd have to figure out how to deal, if you were going to reuse that building for anything other than perhaps storage, you'd have to figure out how you're dealing with bathrooms.
Any other questions, is the board ready to take a vote on this building?
The estimates we have for teardown, like how real, is that just someone we had spitball it, or is that actually something we got in writing from somebody?
I have a quote in writing, it is from a local contractor who did come out and view the building with Fred, who's also given us a price on the brown barn that we used to build the request for capital for that last year. So it's forty-two thousand for the demo of both of those buildings.
How long ago was that quote?
About four to six weeks ago.
So even if you tack on a little bit more.
Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking of that brown building, what you're asking for that.
Oh, I just had that updated, that's not part of that.
Okay, but I was saying, that was ridiculous amount of money they were asking to do that.
Well, and don't forget too, I mean, I'm going to assume that even though you have a quote, that if capital says.
You have to have three anyway.
Right, that it's going to go out, so someone may come back in and go, here, here's blah, 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 and somebody may be up here, so, but that, Kristen, you know, did that as a request of the board, just to get an idea of, could we do like a three-for-one, you know, brown barn in two buildings, or something, you know, something like that?
Wasn't the brown barn fifty thousand?
That was including if we were paving the parking lot as well, adjacent to the recreation court. So the brown barn is closer to twenty-eight on the demo, the reason it's higher is it includes the brown barn, the concrete pad that's adjacent to the brown barn, and then returning the ground to loam and seating. So it's a little bit more involved than just demo there.
If we could, I'd almost, I'd like to hold off on a motion to after we discuss the building that's immediately next to it.
Okay, AKA the Rudolph building. So, and it's kind of cute, because the picture that they have on the front of the assessment does have Rudolph.
Yeah, I noticed that.
On it, so, timing, perfect timing on that.
But he moved though, didn't he?
Yes, Rudolph is now, will be at the general store come the holiday season.
Oh, he's only seasonal?
Yes, Rudolph unfortunately is only seasonal. So with that building, there, it's almost like a rinse and repeat, it's over fifty, hasn't undergone a major renovation, badly compromised, deteriorating, three-slab shingle roof, visible damage, windows, badly degraded clapboard, wood sliding, overhead doors are very aged and difficult to open, reclose, doors require replacement, et cetera. Lacks plumbing, heating, two suspended electric unit heaters, rarely used. Yeah, everything needs replacing, again, also lacks fire alarm and suppression system. So if we look at the three-year, you're looking at round up sixty-five thousand. But still, when you start to break it down and go section by section of a roof of four thousand, walls twenty-three, door two, flooring, round up fourteen.
But that's, that building is really, I don't see any use for it, period, I mean, not even, not even waste putting money into it, I mean, I don't see any use for it whatsoever.
Yeah, it's a smaller and cheaper building, so the repair costs are only ninety or so thousand.
You could buy a REIT's ferry building for ten grand and have a nice building.
Right.
And just along the lines of the cost estimate, actually, in the study, they did do a building demolition estimate, and granted, this is now a year old, but it was twenty-two thousand, so that pretty much tracks with the forty-two that we got for both of them. That says demolition and disposal of any structure or building.
Any other questions?
No, I was wondering if the, we should, as a, at least select board, and hopefully with, with capital planning sort of acquiescence, is that we look to bring to Fall Town Meeting a motion to amend the money we've set aside for a roof on the building that we're talking about tearing down, and instead make that money available to remove those two buildings. So we've already allocated the money, it doesn't take out of any pool that we have available for future stuff, right? We all agree it doesn't seem to make sense to spend fifty grand to replace a roof on a building that we are going to try to get rid of anyway, and we're not, you've not done any procurement on that either at this point, right?
That makes sense.
But I would like to entertain that as a motion that we bring to Fall Town Meeting, that, that adjustment.
Okay, that works, or we could use it if money was needed for paving or something, I mean, so there are other uses that we could have that, so then maybe our request for you is, and in company, can we have ten dollars? Instead of, you know, can we have ten thousand dollars, or something like that?
What I'm ironically thinking is, you know, to tear down the, the old fire station, what, forty-two, forty-two you said?
Yeah, for both.
Yeah, so we have the fifty, so it's a wash, basically, with whatever left over.
Do you know what the cost of putting a road in would be?
I don't have an estimate.
No, I would just say the same thing, because I think we might talk about, because I think we'd want to make sure conservation, if it touches conservation land, it might, you know, might just end up being land that the town owns that sort of does the, you know, corner there yet.
When I was a selectman, we talked about that, and the EP wouldn't give us permission to go over the stream.
Yeah, I remember.
But that was a hundred years ago, so.
Can ask, we'd be happy to ask, con con.
It doesn't really, even if it doesn't happen, you know, at least it's down, it's safe, and we're not paying insurance on it.
Right, we're not paying insurance, we're not paying for upkeep, you know, there's a bunch of things that ultimately saves it down a little bit of money going forward.
How about the landscaping after you take them down? Be a mess over here, with the nice grass and stuff like that.
Well, it probably depends upon future use, I mean, if we're going to put a parking lot in there, I would hate to loam it and grass seed it, but I'm sure we can make it pretty.
We want to do something to make it look presentable while we have that conversation, so, yeah, right, we're not going to, you know, put giant trees there that we then have to cut out in five years, but we probably would do something there to make it look, because I imagine the conversation, even if, even if we want to put a road there, because it touches some conservation, because DP, it's, it's going to have bureaucracy in a couple of years' walls, we don't want to look like an abandoned lot.
You know, it's a little pack right there with some packed benches.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got money from the.
We could put electric chargers there.
That's right, we could put electric chargers.
When you retire, you can sit there.
That's right.
That's right, when he sits there, he can walk up to the general store for a sandwich and a coffee and come back, all right, I'm good with that. Any other questions, board, capital planning, that you have on these two buildings, Ms. Eloise?
I have one last question, have you ever discussed this at a coffee talk?
We haven't discussed it in a coffee talk, we've discussed it at multiple select board meetings that we've had, I can't remember.
Yeah, many people go to them, but they might, I'm not trying to throw stones at you, I might spear you.
You might spear me, yes, yes, here, let me move my water so you don't kill my laptop when you huck it at me.
Well, it would go to town meeting, if the board did vote to reallocate that funding, it does require a town meeting vote to reappropriate the funds, so you would get a good pulse, obviously, from there as well.
Right, so, and we always hold a coffee talk before a town meeting, so we'd be absolutely sure to put it on an April agenda and bring it up, and one of us could stand up and talk to it.
I was going to say, would that be a spring town meeting?
Oh, you want fall?
I thought fall.
All right, well, we have a upcoming coffee talk sometime soon, in a couple of weeks, my calendar.
November, sometime.
Thank you, so, we can add it.
Special town meeting in November?
We are.
We have a special town meeting December ninth.
So we'll have one in.
We'll have a coffee talk in November.
Yep.
Sorry, I'm pulling up the calendar to.
I know, I have the calendar. The fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yep.
So we could put it on the agenda for that, for you, Eloise, and we could talk to that, and have, make sure that people know that these studies are out there, online at townofberlin.com, to go get them and look at them.
Can I ask, when is that coffee talk?
It would be November fourteenth, probably six-thirty.
Yeah, six-thirty or seven, I don't think we've set the exact time.
No, we haven't timed, probably here, but I'm sure we'll have it via Zoom, so folks can chime on in.
Be hybrid.
Yes. Yep.
And there are a couple of things driving that need for a town meeting in December. We just opened the warrant at the last meeting last Monday, and the warrant will close on October twenty-eighth, so we will potentially need to have a capital meeting, because as we talked about, the renovation upstairs, which I keep calling the third floor, it's, it's not, it's the second floor, someday I'll learn how to count floors. But that was the money that didn't come in in time from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funding, it literally came in, I think, the day after we published the warrant for May town meeting. So there's the appropriation of that funding to finish the project with asset, and, you know, complete the appropriation funds. And then I believe the chief, police chief also is going to potentially request an early purchase of a police cruiser, because they are taking so long and are so on back order right now. So what he would normally request in May, I believe he's looking to potentially request it at the December town meeting, because they are selling out and taking a long time to get. So those are just two that I have right now that I think are capital-related, but now that the warrant's open, I should have an idea within a week or so what our other articles might be for you folks.
Right, and to clarify, we're opening the warrant like in twenty minutes or so.
Oh, sorry, it wasn't last week?
It wasn't last week, it's on tonight's agenda.
I was in a time machine. It's tonight, excuse me, today's October seventh, you said twenty-seventh, Peggy, that's stuck in my head, it's all her fault. Yes, we're opening the warrant this evening, thank you, Scott.
I went to find the Northern Lights the other night, so obviously I'm frostbitten and sleep deprived, which I did not find, so, it's all good. So we'll see you back soon.
I don't have a good excuse.
All right, motion, other thought on these two buildings?
Do you want to wait until after we do the coffee talk?
No.
No, I was going to say, because I think we have to make it on the warrant, we should vote on something tonight, so it gets on the warrant. And that, and it does, to your point, Eloise, because it's a warrant article, you know, town meeting will vote on that change, and I, I think if that didn't pass a town meeting, I think it would be sort of wrong for us then at that point to just find another pot of money for it. I mean, we could try a different, a different time, but the town would have potentially spoken about what they feel about the buildings.
Okay.
Does, do you have any idea what we pay for insurance in those two buildings?
They're lumped in all together.
Yeah, I could try to find out, but.
And I'm just, the only reason I'm asking is, when we talk about this at town meeting, that point should be brought up, because we're paying for this for nothing. So that, that point should be brought up, that, you know, we want to take the fifty grand, tear them down, and in essence, we will be saving this much money in insurance, because we're paying that now.
Right, and think about it, we've been paying that amount for insert number of years here, so it's not going to be, oh, we've, we're saving a hundred bucks. It's, and again, that figure is made up.
But that's, that's...
Right.
That's what they want, they want to hear numbers.
Well, and for me, it is, you know, it is almost, what, four hundred eighty, four hundred eighty thousand dollars over the next three years to make them usable, safe buildings to be in. Or fifty thousand to tear them down, you know, that, that the insurance money is probably only a couple of thousand a year, but that if we're going to keep them, we should maintain them. And part of it is, you know, this whole study was, if we're going to keep buildings, we should be maintaining them. It makes sense, and not let them slowly deteriorate, not have someone have accidents in it, not have them condemned or then paying on buildings that we can't, we can't use, and have some, some better use of stuff.
Right, and preview of coming attractions along that point, I, I, you know, think FY twenty-six is the year of addressing building maintenance from both an operational standpoint and also from a capital standpoint in looking at the facility study and some of the immediate recommendations that are there. And one of the things I'm working on is trying to call together the immediate recommendations in each of these studies and try to put together a plan with some short-term things that we can maybe just check off and put a package together for capital to look at, that I'll obviously bring to the select board first, and then for capital to look at for May town meeting, to see if we can just get some of those items done in the buildings, so we don't cause a hole to become a, you know, massive issue.
With all these studies, you know, they've said, change the light bulbs, clock the windows, do minor stuff that we've identified in each building that you could go around and do, and then maybe with that, you start to put a priority to say, hey, these are buildings one and two. The Legion Hall, you know, maybe that's kind of sort of out of the picture, don't know really. But then you start looking at the South Common Buildings. You start looking at the library. You start looking at eighteen-seventy. You know, so at least we can get an idea to come back to you to say, we need fifty thousand this year, but we're going to need two hundred bazillion dollars next year, because we need to fix. So we started the worksheet to put everything together, we just need to tinker and finalize and give it to you. So we have a plan to come back to you with.
We like, we like plans.
I know, you like plans, and that's...
Plans, especially five-year ones.
Yeah, the society goes on ten years even.
Yeah.
So it talks about, you know, one, three, five, and ten, so you have a sense of looking out a bit. I think we're, we're cutting, cutting some of the easy fruit early. You know, some of the buildings that, like these two, that might make the, that I think is a relatively straightforward and where to go. I think the other end of the spectrum, where there's just a couple of thousand things, I think we're going to use some ARPA funds to take care of some of those things, so they don't grow bigger. And then, as we get into the center of it, then you get to the messier things, things that are money on buildings we really want to sort of hold on to and really think have some good uses for the long term.
Part of our problem as a town, not just us, every town, we nickel-dime stuff, but we shouldn't be nickel-diming. Because that nickel-dime stuff costs us tens of thousands of dollars the next year or two.
It does.
And that's the problem with all towns, they have that same problem. They're trying to save a penny here, but instead of spending a nickel now, you're going to spend a dime the next year. And we, we just, we as a, as a town, we've got to get, get that a little bit better. We've got to stop saving some money, not spending it.
Yeah, I mean, and truly, these reports talk about how fast time flies. They were on site a year ago, October eighteenth, and here we are, almost a year later.
Yep.
If Peggy had the right date in mind, that we're finally talking about doing something. So it's like, we have the information, we're not making stuff up, it's visible for anyone who wants to see it. Make a decision. Make a decision and go.
But people don't know that the, that it's up, so how do they go look? That's the thing.
The information, as I've said, we've talked about it at several meetings, and it's also available on the website. So Kristin, I don't know if you can whiz out to the website, townofberlin.com, and show that it's up there, but it's also going to come out too. But again, we can't not take action, because we don't assume that people don't know what's going on.
Well, I think eventually you might hear from people.
And that's...
It will be probably too late, because we will have made a decision. And you just, you very well might have people who've lived here a long time, and they're attached to those particular buildings.
But, you know...
What, what I like about the study is that it was done by someone who's a little bit dispassionate, it's just about the dollars, and, and will sometimes make some, there's probably some buildings in there where it doesn't make sense from a pure fiscal, nothing but dollar standpoint to do things, but that as a town, we still think it's worthy of doing. Again, I think we start with the buildings that might be, these are buildings from the, you know, sixties and seventies, which is old, but not as old as some of the other historic buildings we have in town, where it, I think it is messier to talk about how much it's worth versus how much the building's worth versus how much it really is, sort of town history stuff.
Just, you know, we need to be aware of it.
You remember too, as a capital planning, we discussed this, I was last fall too. And that was televised, so it's not like...
Right, and every committee in town received this report and provided input. So at some point, the people who needed to talk about it, talked about it. All right.
And if you go to the website on the homepage and you go under news, you do have to click the more button or the view all button at the bottom here, and then you'll, there's a link to the facilities study, Google Drive where they're all located, they're so large, we had to put them in the drive.
And that was posted August twenty-first, so it's been kicking around a while.
August twenty-first of...
Twenty-four.
Yep.
All right, so is there a motion to do something with these buildings?
Is that to adjust the, the motion at the town, at Fall Town Meeting, so the, the moving money, so they can be torn down, with the intent to remove those buildings?
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second that.
All right, had lots of discussions, any other questions from capital? All right, and I'll take a vote, all those in favor of demoing those two buildings with, with an announcement on the upcoming fall?
December ninth, special town meeting.
Thank you, thank you for finishing my statement, thank you, I appreciate that. December ninth meeting to reallocate roof money, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll be back, don't go too far as we find more information. And you know what, it's not going to be like it's a bada-boom, bada-bing process, you know, we voted tonight, yay, building has come down in a week, yay. It's not going to happen that fast, there's still stuff to go through. But again, a year later, we finally took our chance at kicking the can, so I appreciate that. I appreciate you all being here. Lovely to see you all.
Right, and again, I think that it's going to end up happening, is there will be a request this fall for May town meeting, for some monies to renovate some of the buildings that we think need money for renovation and, and long-term keeping for the town.
And just to update you, on the eighteen-seventy, the committee was here last week, they, we gave them some ARPA money to do painting and all fun stuff inside, and I know that they'll be going to CPA for bigger chunks of money for the granite steps, to do something with that, and to put like an alternate way to get up, so you're not cutting up the neighbor's driveway.
Shared driveway.
And that shared driveway, and, and that way. So that's in process too, so hopefully we'll be able to find alternate funding, so we don't keep coming back to you asking for.
Well, I mean, it's a little, it's a little overlappy and tricky, right? Because in theory, anything over ten thousand is supposed to come to us.
Correct.
Even the ARPA funds. So we would ask if we could at some point get an updated list of ARPA funding, spending?
If that's allocation?
And then also with the facilities, that's also part of our charter, not, not to... I don't think we have a voice, we just have to keep track of what you guys are doing.
We appreciate that. And that's just, I, I think more and more, our committees need to work closer, you know, we need to get rid of all the little silos and fiefdoms that exist.
Well, this is my fiefdom, Anna.
This is that your fiefdom ego, Anna.
And Eloise is the carrier big stick, so...
She's there to enforce your fiefdoms.
You're the enforcer, gentlemen, good luck.
May the force be with you.
What has been decided, any other buildings have you made decisions on yet?
No, this is, this is the beginning of them. Obviously, we, we've agreed to put some money into eighteen-seventy Town Hall, so that that's likely one that we're...
Well, that makes sense.
We're planning keeping. I think one of the things with the ARPA funds is that some of the rules, and we said this at the public meeting last week, so I don't think I'm saying anything out of order, but that we have to have projects all allocated by the end of this year.
Right.
But that you can, in the following year, move money from one project to another if one project, like, comes in under. And so we're likely to create a line item for improvements in our buildings in accordance to the facility study. So if another project came in significantly under, we'd have some money in a line item we could move over to do some of those short-term, sort of immediate needs on the facility study. I don't know which ones we would do, I don't know if we'll end up with any money. We've actually allocated all the, almost all the funds at this point, but, but that's one of the strategies we have, is to potentially have that as another pool to do some of those immediate funds.
And that's why we want to put that spreadsheet together for you, so at least you can see, because you all have your input, but at least you can see the summary input of what Concom said, what planning said, what blah, blah, blah said, so it's all up there, so we can make sure that we get that over to you. It's a work in process, but at least you'll have something.
Well, sure, it's hard to manage everybody's opinions.
Cool.
And my idea is to go as broad as possible, just so you know, on that agreement, like, taking basically the buildings that we want to keep and fix, taking the recommendations from years one through three of each of those buildings and attaching them, because you do have to have a scope.
Yep.
So we could say, okay, we have thirty thousand left, here's a scope, and I have to see if I have to be more specific than that, or can I attach hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential repairs, and then we figure out exactly which one we're going to do after. So, you know, just trying to keep everything locked in, the ARPA funding is, is taking a lot of time, trying to get everything obligated before the end of the year, so, yeah, that's fun.
Well, we appreciate you.
Can I ask one other question?
Of course.
Do we have anything on South Street Bridge?
Yes. So the state is final, has finalized their review, finally, and given comments back to the engineers. There's a thirty-day review period and comment period back from the, I'm sorry, comment period and review back from the engineers. And then once we have their sign-off on the design, we can immediately put in for the construction funding with hope of a summer twenty-twenty-five project.
That'd be good. So we're still working under the grant funding that we received originally?
Correct, for the design.
Yeah.
And then the next step is to get that construction funding, but we would be eligible to immediately apply for that once we have the sign-off on the design.
Awesome. Thank you so much, we appreciate you always.
Thank you.
Thanks for inviting us over.
Thanks for coming.
Anytime, Anna. Well, you know, you'll be back, because it is budget season, so, you know.
It's flu...
Budget.
Budget.
Budget, yes, yes.
We're so excited, we got to meet for the first time already.
I'm hopeful you don't have to head to Florida this week.
No, not this week.
Okay.
No. Ten days, I've got ten days for this destruction to get fixed, it should be fine.
Absolutely, yeah. Take care.
All right, thank you again. All right, Fire Mike and, and Police Eric and Fia, you are up for our seven-thirty meeting.
Chiefs, you're up.
Here they come.
We're a sociable town, people like chatting.
No kidding. No vest for, for Fia yet?
No, I've got a, one of those things, she's growing into it and stuff, we're, we're trying to figure out what to do for her vest and to give her the best one that she's going to fit into, I got to see how much she's going to grow, so, yeah.
How's your wife at sewing, just saying? All right. Mr. Eric, you want to go first?
Correct, month of September, the department handled a thousand sixty calls for service, sixteen cases involving criminal charges, twenty-five motor vehicle crashes, nine with injuries, hundred and thirty-nine stops and sixty-one citations issued. The drone unit was deployed six times, for those within town, one to Marlboro for their parade, and one to Hudson for their town festival. Training has started back up again, so I listed out Detective Tringola attended a four-and-a-half-day class hosted by MPTC, frontline leadership. Officer Jake Breschau attended a three-day class, PACE, which I put the acronym in there for you, that way you knew what it was.
Thank you.
Basically focused on state officer safety and identifying current criminal trends. Sergeant Richard Gilchrist and Officer Corvino attended a one-day class hosted by MPTC on elections. So we are covered on all the laws, rules, regulations on voting procedure and pre-planning for law enforcement. Sergeant Gilchrist went with the Worcester County Drug Task Force last month on a raid, and they netted ten grams of cocaine, ten grams of crystal meth, and point-two-five grams of heroin. The investigation, I know I've talked to you in the past, with Alta, joint investigation between Berlin and Millbury, netted three arrests, the first one just went to trial, found guilty, so the first of the three is successful. And I thought the theft was two-hundred-and-forty thousand, it was three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars between the Berlin store and Millbury store. And happy to say, we have another student officer in the academy. Patrick May was selected as our next full-time officer. He is due to finish the academy December sixth, and he'll start a twelve-week field training program. And we are just high, uh, out on an advertisement for our next full-time officer, which is, was approved at last town meeting.
Awesome.
And of course, you got the ACO report.
That, that ACO report was longer than usual, right? It's not by just memory.
Yeah, it was longer than usual, there's some unique circumstances involved.
Yep.
So first times for her, understanding Gates' bond, of course, is one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of communication back and forth to the ACO, ACO myself this past month. But, you know, it's, it's all a learning curve for all of us, so, just making sure we're doing the right things.
I'd rather have too much than not enough.
Yeah.
Any specific questions for Chief Shatner? Wow, you're getting off easy.
Oh, well, let me, I guess I could ask either one of you this.
Oh, let me go back to old business, the radio's final stage, you're getting tower approval to mount our antennas with Cobra Road.
Good.
And I saved, I saved that for the last, because I know that's a joint conversation, actually a three-way conversation between us.
So my question is, will my cell service improve once the antenna work is done?
No, our radios will improve.
Really? It's not, it's not affecting ours, our cell?
No, this is purely just for...
Because mine's gotten really bad at home.
Mine is actually going out a lot in town.
That is why Verizon wanted to come to Mount Pisgah, to put their cell tower.
What's causing the issue, do you think?
Conservation commission.
No, no, no.
No, 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 just generally. Sorry.
I just think it's the number of users and the size of the equipment, and basically what they're saying is...
Five G?
Yeah, yeah, well, I think five Gs would actually throw out our old radios, so, our antenna wires and...
Well, five G has less range than four G.
Yeah, it has a much less range, much, much less range than four G.
And unfortunately, South Street is a dead zone. You know when you're coming up to it, if you're on the phone, you tell the person to wait for, for five seconds, get past, like Julie Lee's house and coming around the corner, and it picks back up.
Yeah, oh, I've never had a problem in the station with FirstNet, but today the state was trying to call me, and I was on the fireside having lunch, and my phone number rang, and I got, but my email came through that said they were trying to get ahold of me, so I just, I left the fire office and went over to my office, and my phone worked fine. So, yeah, close to the windows, I guess, I don't know.
We're going to have to get you one of those big aluminum hats.
Yeah.
Don't laugh, you're getting one too, so...
I mean, you get, you go outside even, and it's, you lose people, the calls are dropped.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're noticing our cruisers too with our mobile app, our wheels, we're getting dropped a lot now, so. Not sure what's going on, but...
Maybe it's the bridge, the bridge is out.
The timing for the third emergency tower, because that's, that's like phase three or four, seven.
I've been in verbal negotiations with the hotel, they're for it. I just don't want to waste their time until we get the money. Once we get the money, I'll be more happy to pick up the conversations with them again.
And we've been approved for the money, so you, when you mean to get the money, it's like all the paperwork, this is...
Yeah, yeah, when the money's physically in hand and we can do the work, I don't want to start now and then all of a sudden, you know, the money doesn't come through, because the Fed's trying to shuffle the money elsewhere. You know, I just don't want to get anybody's hopes up or go through all the legal processes. I'm sure the hotel is going to have to have their lawyers draft up paperwork for us. So I don't want to incur any cost, like, so we got the verbal agreement, and it will, it'll probably take two weeks to solidify, but it'll take more than that to order the equipment.
All right.
All right, any other questions for Chief Eric? All right, guess you're up.
All right, well, month of September, we did seventy-nine calls for...
All right. Well, month of September, we did seventy-nine calls for service, which are broken down for you. Fire prevention saw about seventy to eighty fire inspections that were done throughout town. Activity-wise, fall has been very dry. Luckily, we had quite a bit of rain today, so that's always a good thing. But we've seen an increase in the brush fires that are burning deep into the ground. The fires that we have have required a lot of water to extinguish and the manpower just to dig them off, they have been burning deep. So please be careful in the fall here as the, as the leaves fall. As you're aware, we placed a red X on the First Parish Church after consulting with the building commissioner and the church itself. The red X is a warning to any firefighters from my department or mutually aid departments to not enter the building because of the danger of the structural members failing. The posting from the building commissioner also limits access to one or two people to check the building. The ringing of the bells on Sunday or for any other reason has been stopped until the repairs are made. That's been posted on the side of the building, so the intent is, once those repairs are made, we'll take the posting down, we'll take the red X off the building. I'm happy to report an open house was held on Saturday. It was a huge success. We had well over four-hundred-and-twenty-five people that attended throughout the day and they went through our demonstrations. I'm very proud, as every member of my department was present except those that were in class. We had two that actually had a class that day that was more important for them to be there for that. We ran out of food at one point, had to make another run to get supplies to feed everybody, but it was an awesome day. And we got to inform a lot of people on what we do and the demonstrations were a huge success. Just to piggyback on what Chief Shatner said, the drilling unit is seeing more call-outs and we're usually more on fire EMS calls. It's been successful for brush fires and smoke investigations for us that led us to find some of the illegal, illegal fires that are occurring in backyards. They're not the small fires. Some of them have been rather big, which have created a lot of smoke and trying to find them was a little difficult. But we find this tool more and more useful every month as we use it for different things. Training for the month of September was focused on auto extrication. Crews went to Berlin Auto, big shout-out to them. They let us use some cars. And it gave us a few automobiles to practice extrication skills on. Removal of doors, roofs and a technique called a dash roll to be able to take the dashboard off of occupants and stuff, which is huge for us to be able to do. EMS, we covered what's called BLS or Basic Life Support Pharmacology. We're one of the few departments in the region that the basic EMTs are given a little bit additional training. And there's some medications that we can give on life-threatening calls when ALS isn't available or they're not there yet. The muster truck, Old Engine Two, has been removed from the old rescue building. And we're in the process of getting ready to sell that truck. So more to come as we actually work on that to, to kind of move that truck forward and get it off of our roles for paying for. The car that we received from the PD has been registered to the fire EMS department. It's being changed over for the radios and to red lights. And then after that, it'll be re-lettered, so it'll, it'll be a Berlin fire car and not confused as a police car. September, we had thirty-five open shifts that were unfilled. The majority of those open shifts occurred on the overnight. Our response times are high due to that, no coverage of being in the station. We have response times, unfortunately, that are anywhere from ten to fifteen minutes, which in my opinion is unacceptable, so we're working on trying to solve that problem. Continue to highlight the home safety check program that is available to any resident. Please reach out to Lieutenant Polino at fireprevention@townofberlin.com or call the station to schedule a safety check with fire prevention. We're coming into that time of the year in November is the change your clocks, change your batteries program for those that still have CO or smoke detectors that have battery backups in them. If you need help with that, call the fire department. We're happy to assist. I did put in here that we're moving forward with the American Tower Project. And we're hoping that that'll be something that is going to get solved real quick, as Kristin has given them everything they've asked for at this point. One of the things we're having a problem with on the fireside is Taylor Road, our other site, has failed on us several times over the last week, which I think is a power issue with the power supply that's up there. That hopefully, once we replace that, that, that'll keep us up and going. But we're waiting for Coburn Road to be done because everything has to be switched over at once, because they work, you know, in tandem with each other. The second floor renovation project is moving forward. Hopefully, the architect will have the plans finished up very soon here, like in the next week. He's been in several times to meet with myself and Chief Shatner and go over what we wanted. A preliminary set of plans was actually provided to ASABET, who are eagerly awaiting the approval of the project. They're, they're chomping at the bit to get in and start this and, you know, are very thrilled. Fia Metta continues to train and meet the public. And as you can see, she's growing and very playful at the beginning of the meeting. So far, she's been widely accepted by the public. She just turned five months and seems to have entered that rebellious teenage stage, as I'll call it, because she listens to the commands and sometimes she'll adhere to them, and other times she just kind of walks away. So we'll see how that goes. Just from a training note and stuff, I also, yeah, I know, she's, it's hard to get mad at her. She's awful cute. Lieutenant Polino and firefighter Michelle DeVoe went to the safe conference that we had, which was for the student education, for fire education. They spent two days going to that, so that we'll be in the schools, getting some materials and stuff to be able to be in the schools and educate in town. So that's, that's the basic update. The last thing that I do have is we have on our Facebook website, we put a link in there for the breast cancer awareness T-shirts. It has our logo on there, on the front and the back. We're selling them with the proceeds that'll be going to, and I wish I could remember who it was, but it's basically through UMass for the, the cancer support network there, for the families and stuff, or for the women that need assistance and stuff with housing or anything else. So that's where the donations from the Relief Association will be going.
I would hug you, but I'd cry, and that would be the second meeting in a row that I'd cry. So I will, thank you. You are the first chief in three that I have asked for that, as you can tell. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure.
All right. Any other questions for Chief on his report? And then we'll get down to the cannot.
The, the fire reports used to have on them revenue, so how much we billed and how much we brought in. And I know we're not doing sort of waivers anymore, because there's a policy on how waivers. But I'd like to get a sense of like how we're doing on budget and that and making sure the bills are getting out in a timely manner.
Okay. I can add that.
All right. So what do you have for us on the not?
So the not, I did produce some paperwork that I received from the Relief Association, which is kind of a, a letter that they received, kind of giving them the donation of the truck, if you will, and meeting minutes that occurred back in the eighties, I think, when they took ownership of the truck. Or at least that's their belief. So the, kind of, if you will, negotiating that between the Relief Association and you guys, I'm not sure where that truck stands. I'm not sure if that's enough paperwork to show that they have ownership of it. I can say that the Relief Association, they, they would like to see the truck somehow stay here in, in Berlin. You know, get restored and be here, but they probably don't have the money for it. So I don't know if that's something that you'd entertain with the president of the Relief Association coming before you to speak to you about it, kind of working on a joint plan together or anything like that. You know, I'm not sure there's a big holdup there with they own it versus you own it. As much as it is, they don't want to see it leave town. And they would like to see it stay, you know, owned by the town slash fire department, kind of memorialized and kept here in perpetuity.
So to the best of your knowledge, the fire association owns the truck?
Yes.
Not the town of Berlin?
That's, that's my understanding from talking to them, that, but that is not my legal opinion on it or anything.
I'm not a lawyer. I'm fire chief, but I'm not a lawyer.
I mean, I think from our, our standpoint, if someone else wants it, I think it is theirs and they can dispose it the way they want. If they're not willing to, again, we've not voted a select board, it's only a motion. It's just an opinion of one of the select board members. But I would not fight them over. I don't think it is, like, I feel we should have it and they feel it. I think it is like, if no one else has it, I think the default is the town, or the town will dispose of it. If they have uses for it, places to send it, other stuff, I think they're, from my standpoint, more than welcome to have it.
Okay.
I think it's important just to get it off the town rolls, whether it's off the rolls because we donate to them or it's off the rolls because we go to munisabet and, and list it, or we go to some antique fire museum place or someplace that restores old cars.
Yep.
So if it's on munisabet, can anyone put in a bid for it, or is that just for municipalities? Yes, anyone can put what?
Anybody, yep.
Stationwide.
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right. So then Kristin, since it's, to the best of Chief's knowledge, I think there's a plaque. So if you go in that building, look at the, I think it's on the driver's side, that there's a plaque that says that it's, was donated to the fire association. But that could be another one of those myths that are just whizzing through town.
Okay.
So if the fire association truly does own it, then the town technically is of no responsibility to put any money into it and/or pay for any type of storage for it, correct?
That would be correct. I would also perhaps take the next step to say it should not be on the town's insurance.
That is correct, since we're trying to take the buildings down.
Do we, is that actually on the town insurance?
I would have to check.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I know the, the muster truck engine too that we just pulled out. I know that one was, but I wasn't, I never, I don't think I ever got confirmation about the not.
I'll check it out.
Okay.
So is the muster truck going on munisabet?
Well, I, I think I need to have further conversations with you on it. I have, it can go on munisabet, but I have several people in the area that are interested in that truck. And where, to what Chief Shatner just said, where it becomes a national bidding. There's, there's a lot of people that would like to see that truck stay in the area, which is why my thought was if we did like a two-week, you know, bid, you know, open bid that we did on what, on the end of the last day, and whoever bid the highest got the truck. Might be the best way to do it, just to keep it local.
Yeah.
But I kind of bring that to you guys to say, what, what direction would you like me to go with that? Because I don't, I don't want to.
I would gladly do a little extra work to have it stay local.
Yeah, okay.
I like that as well. The little extra work will take a little extra time, but I think it's worth it, just because we have to put a bid package together, advertise it, do all of that, but I think it's worth it as long as you guys can wait a little bit for it.
Yeah, take a look at our munisabet. You'll see what were four-thousand-dollar trucks being sold for five-thousand dollars. So I think that you'd probably definitely benefit higher financially doing a local. We have, of course, when the hard streams are attached to it, people throw extra money at it.
Do you know if any, if the fire association, because I reached out to a relation in the fire association for like pictures or stories about that that could go, you know, kind of like you did with nine eleven. You know, you have a little nice memorial with the beam from one of the towers that you do the same for the not and the other one, you know.
We actually, just one of the things we had at open houses, we had a whole section, all the old apparatus with the pictures and the photos and kind of the history of where it came from. We had Chief Munter, we had his picture out there with being a line of duty death to explain what that was. So we had a lot of pictures that were out there and stuff, so we do have some pictures of that that kind of memorialize the truck and to explain what it was.
Nice. Okay. All right. I appreciate, I mean, I know that this has been another one of those year-long projects of Mike, 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 and it was always folklore, reality, don't know, kind of, sorta. So, I'm, yeah, I'm with Scott. If the fire association wants it. Do we have to put, is that like, do we have to do a formal, a formal vote on that, Kristin? If we don't want it?
I would like that, just because with the ownership being a little bit dicey, I would think that if the select board did have any claim to it or would go to show that the board had any claim to it, that you're releasing that obligation.
And I am fine with the, the stuff you provided from nineteen eighty-eight that shows that the intent was to turn over there. And so I think because of that and because I don't think it's a fight to have, because I think a local group trying to take care of it, assuming they want it. I think I'd make the motion that we, we let the.
Fire Association.
Fire Association, I was looking for the right words on my screen, have ownership of that, of the not.
Okay. And I will, I will say the conversation that I had with them was they weren't looking to have a battle with you on it. They just, they just wanted to make sure the truck was going to, as much as they could, keep it here locally somehow to get it restored or come up with a plan and kind of go that route with it, so.
I think after, I don't have a date, but after a period of time, they, they can't find a way to do it. I think we find a way to take it back and then we'll do munisabet or something like that. But I, I think it's, it's theirs to do as they see fit and, and if that doesn't work.
And there is some money, right? There is an account, again, another folklore, that there is an account somewhere, I don't know by whom,
Yes.
has money for it.
I believe, I believe there's a little bit of money in there, and when I say that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that's under ten thousand dollars. It was enough that I know at one point in time, they were talking about if they, if they didn't have the truck to do anything with, they were, they were trying to do something on the grounds to do some type of a memorial type of thing with benches and stuff to, to memorialize the fire, you know, public safety department type of thing. But it wasn't enough to restore the truck, so I, I know it was a short amount of money that they could do something with, but it wasn't enough to completely restore the truck, so. But at least there's a, there's something there to start the process.
Okay. All right. So is there a second to Scott's motion?
Second.
All right. I've had lots of discussion. Thank you. Appreciate you. All those in favor of giving the not to the fire association, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate you both. Stay safe.
The second floor space, has that been emptied of materials?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, it has.
Yeah, the architect was very happy the other day.
Yep.
I saw the ASABET truck in the driveway last week or something. I was like.
Yeah. That was, Wayne Coulson was here because he wanted to go over, he just wanted to get, see about an update and stuff like that. We had a preliminary set of plans. He was thrilled to go through them, see some of the stuff that we were looking at. He actually had the kids with him and stuff, which I didn't realize until afterwards, but yeah, he was, he was like, no, he said, we're, he said, we can't wait. And they have, there's a couple of projects from last year that they're finishing up, and it should bring them to the November, December timeframe. So it might transition nicely into this if this gets approved and everything. And we're just talking about the equipment and stuff, and hopefully at that point in time, when they have to leave one job site, they can just come here and kind of store it all up on the second floor there. That way they don't have to bring it back to the school, find places to store and then figure out how to get it here.
Nice.
Yeah, he's, he's very excited about it, along with the rest of the instructors.
Very cool.
Sorry. I had other things on my list.
May I ask one quick question? But just to keep in mind, before you forget, Lori Trehan's office has been in touch recently. As this is an ARPA-funded project, they have me regularly update them. They're, she's very interested in this project and has asked if there is any type of groundbreaking to let her office know that she would like to be in attendance.
More shovels!
So I don't know if we can arrange something like that before we kick it off. I think the fact that it's a nice vocational, vocational kid combo thing would make for a great story.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll mention that to ASABET and stuff, so that we can plan on that and they can kind of, where they've done these before, they can come up with something for that.
Great.
Perfect.
Yeah, that'd be cool publicity. Get the item down here. Probably, I bet you we could get Spectrum News on a, on a slow day, so. Cool. Awesome. Scott, anything else?
Yeah, the, just a suggestion, it might be worthy of re-looking at the drone use policy. Only, I don't have any, I think all the uses you've done are totally fine. But that policy was written before we actually had the drone and actually had the requests. And before we get ourselves in trouble to look at it going, oh, now that we know how it's really being used, how it's really being requested, just to make sure the policy covers that. So you don't have to say no to something that you really want to use it for and think's a good use.
Yeah, no, the policy's pretty specific. So it's, it's an accredited policy that we, we follow. We do have to tweak it a little bit as the laws change, but, yeah, but it's good.
Awesome. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I hate to, do you just want to leave her here?
She's sleeping now.
She is.
She's finally conked out.
She's finally conked out.
Oh, you just have to pick her up and carry her.
Yeah. It was, it was a long weekend for her. She was exhausted.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. Well done. Well, thank you both.
I would say we'd babysit, but my dogs want nothing to do with Fia, unfortunately. They want to be stars of the show and she just steals it away from them, so.
She's also got too much energy. She wants to play with every dog and, yeah, it's.
I have a dog that has too much energy too, and so if they want to find a way to burn up energy.
He can have a little playdate.
Yeah, bring him down, because she'll probably, once she gets, she kind of did that with Jackson and stuff, and they run around out in the backfield and just chase each other. As a matter of fact, that one of the neighbors has a little tiny, I don't even remember what kind of dog it is. His name is Otis, but it's like, he runs into the station looking for her, she'll run over there, but they will chase each other around in the field and stuff. And tires are out, so it's good.
And who is Boston in all of those?
He comes in occasionally. He comes occasionally. They did a little farm date Saturday night.
Yep. Yep, they ran around and played and wrestled and, yep.
Are you, are you going to bring Fia to, is it eleven o'clock on the thirtieth? We're having kids come through?
Oh, for Halloween.
Halloween.
For Halloween, or you?
Yep, yep. She'll be out there for that.
Oh, good.
Cameo will make a cameo appearance as well.
Okay. She needs a little costume, just saying.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to work on something with that. She's also going to the library on, I think it's the twenty-third for the pajama storytime. Yeah. So it's really cute. They actually put out the flyers and stuff, and they have all the characters in there, and they have her in there with a helmet on. They took one of her pictures and shrunk it. It's actually, it's very cute, so.
Her own little celebrity.
Yep, yep.
Well done. Yeah. Good luck with that.
She's out like a light now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Nice to see you. All right, Kristin, TA report, you're up. It looks tiny this week.
Yeah, a couple of quick updates. This is only a few days between the last meeting and this one. Fia doesn't want to leave. FINCOM held their second budget meeting last Wednesday to work on the calendar and budget packet that goes out. Their next meeting will be the sixteenth. Again, just reminding all residents to attend or watch the hybrid meetings that we. Uh, again, just reminding all residents to attend or watch the hybrid meetings, uh, that we have. They're held at seven thirty on Wednesday evenings, and the link for the meetings is available at mytowngovernment.org/01503, which is the zip code for Berlin. Uh, also, capital request forms and employee performance appraisals have gone out, and everyone is working on those. Those are underway. Uh, the board has voted to have what I'm now trying to call Winter Town Meeting, cause I guess it's December. Uh, so that's more appropriate. On December ninth at six thirty at Berlin Memorial School in the gym. And, uh, tonight, not last week, I will be asking the select board to open the warrant with a closing date of October twenty-eighth. That'll be a three-week window for the warrant to be open, and to date, I've received fifteen potential articles.
Now sixteen.
Now sixteen.
Now sixteen.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the nice thing about that is, you know, some of them, yes, they could wait till May, but they're all, you know, on the simpler side, and it will save having to have forty-five articles potentially at May Town Meeting. So I think it's worth doing. Uh, the Energy Committee and National Grid held their first quarterly Community Solutions Meeting last week as well. Um, we had the opportunity to discuss the EV charging grant, as you heard, and potential grant opportunities, as well as the Green Communities Grant that is going to provide HVAC upgrades at the town offices. Um, lot going on with recreation, as you may expect. Um, we met Julie Lee and I to discuss, uh, the hiring of the new program counselors and part-time rec director, as well as the playground and pavilion projects, which unfortunately, due to the cost estimates that have come in, need to go out to a formal bid this fall and winter. So that is one of the inter-agency agreements I will be recommending between the select board and the Recreation Committee to secure, um, the funds for the playground, because that is ARPA Pavilion and CPA funding. Um, also, there is a proposed master plan for South Commons, and Recreation will be seeking CPA funding for this plan at May Town Meeting, and as a result, they are putting the field renovation project on hold, pending that completion. The idea is to get some outside help in mapping out the fields where they should be located and the best layout for everything up there, because there are many differing opinions as to where things should go. Um, and so that way we don't cater to one interest group or another. We get a professional opinion on how things should be laid out. There's also other space up there that is not being utilized, that we'll be able to look at through this plan as well. Uh, two pieces of good news, uh, prepared and advertised bid documents for the Brown Barn demolition, finally, as well as the eighteen seventy interior plastering and painting project. I was doing one, so I just had to push myself to do two. Um, also, one leftover from last year is the cable server upgrades that was a capital project. Um, I'm having a little trouble getting the quotes to match apples to apples, but we're working on getting that information so that we can move forward with cables server quote. Um, you heard the chief talk about American Tower. Um, what happened is apparently the town never had a lease agreement with American Tower for the Coburn Road Site, and, uh, it is a bureaucratic process like none I have quite ever seen, and I say that as someone who's worked in government for their entire career. Um, we just have to keep uploading document after document, and so I'm hoping we'll be there shortly. And, um, I also returned the Green Communities contract for the HVAC upgrades. As soon as it is countersigned by the state, we can move forward with those. And, um, one last note, I did have a conversation today with the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They called and, uh, requested a call. Um, they are working with the new school administration and us, um, on some strategies to move forward for the FY twenty-six budget. Um, they have expressed willingness to come to a FinCom meeting and, uh, have some conversations with us. And so looking forward to continuing to have some conversations with DESI.
So, uh, a question for the master plan for South Commons and how rec's gonna look for CPA money. In June, this might be your question too. Um, there will be no issues with the three hundred thousand that was voted on at last town meeting to fix those fields? We're not gonna lose the money? Does it have to be moved?
Right.
No, I'm not, not unless they change the whole to do. I mean, we have to look at it, but.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that money there, money stays there. We don't have to go through this again.
And I believe they're in communication with CPA too, so they'll let them know if there are.
They talked to CPA about a master plan, so they.
As well as the fields.
Right. CPA must be aware that they're doing that, cause it wouldn't make sense. It would be a horrible waste to spend three hundred thousand dollars to put in good fields and then discover that they're not where we want them to be and have to do it again. That would be a.
It's a slick master plan, and, and they have worked with other communities, and it's not like they're gonna come in and everything's gonna be in place by next July. This is like long-term, ten-year things, because obviously they can only build as money is allowed. So they can say, we wanna over there and we wanna over there, but if we only have a little bit of money to put a little over there. So, just want to set expectations that this is just not.
Well.
It'll be done.
Well, the master plan's not sort of, they're not gonna like move the pond to someone else, right? I mean, this is like tweaking of things and.
Well, you're looking at like.
We've had discussions about where gazebos and pavilions might go, and that's a good to think about in a big, sort of, you know.
And the baseball field, do you bring the other one down? Do you try and put in some type of walking path in the back, et cetera? So, um, no, there, the plan that they had is, is very good, and they're, they're aware that nothing really can happen until town meeting, and then when the money is available come July-ish.
And the playground is going within its existing footprint, um, and the pavilion obviously was voted on location-wise at town meeting. Um, those are more straightforward than the field projects and other things that have been discussed, like walking paths and things of that nature. Um, I was, I admit I was a little skeptical at first, was, does this make the most sense to do? Because we have already gone down the road of doing so many improvements at South Commons. But after listening to the consultants and hearing their plan, I, I was impressed, and I do think before anything else that is less straightforward goes in there, um, it makes sense to, to stop for a minute, do this plan, and, um, then continue forward with what we have funding for with an eye to the future for other, um, items.
Not Frankenstein it?
No, let's not do that.
All right. And the rec director, um, interviews Dee this week and next? Yes?
They're gonna have to be next.
Next week? Okay, cool. All right. Uh, any questions for Kristen on her report? All right. We're skippy-doing on down. We have no old business. I don't know how that happened, but we have no old business, so we're gonna whiz down to new business. Uh, to talk about the Conservation Commission request for a portion of the funding from the River Bridge Development Agreement in exchange for modifying the conservation restriction, um, over at, um, Boundless Adventures for Lots Six A and B. Um, to me, this is the cart before the horse. We don't have town input, we don't have state input. You're gonna put an RFP out there, an RFQ, whatever you want to call it, to find water people. You're gonna determine costs, so, um, you know, I'm open to hearing question, or comments from Scott and Chris on this request, but for me, we don't have enough information to say here.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna let you.
Are you gonna turn to me? Keep passing it down?
No.
No.
That's fine.
We could also hear from Kristen.
Yeah, no.
If you want to hear from Kristen first.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, in the folder, I didn't see what the request from Conservation Commission was.
So when we were.
Cause the folders just are lettered to them.
Oh, yes, sorry. That was just to refresh on, on the past, um, memo that we had written. When we were at the Conservation Commission meeting, they did ask if they could have a, potentially a portion of the Boundless Adventures rents, um, as they were amenable to modifying the conservation restriction. My concern with that, and I echo Peg's concern, is there are so many steps that this could go sideways along the way. I just don't think that we have enough information. Will it get through town meeting? Will it get through the state EEA? Will we get special legislation? Um, you know, where are we going to be at at that time with regards to everything going on at River Bridge? To me, it really makes sense to wait on that request at this time and see if town meeting, at least at first, is even amenable to making that modification.
Yes, I think once we have a specific request, I think we could take it up. I, I think as a whole, I think there could be an agreement that some of the money we get from some of the uses of those wells, I think would be, I'd be more amenable. The rent to Boundless Adventure, I think is, you know, what we're getting administered, that's the money we're supposed to be getting in the first place from, uh, the, the Sennys in some respects. And so I don't see that, to me, as not necessarily new revenue. To me, the new revenue would be the rents we get from developing the property or, or the water on the property. Um, and, uh, I think that no matter what happens to the property, I think Conservation should have said there's a conservation easement on it, they're going to, but I mean, even if there wasn't, I think there would be the, and then, you know, we could as a group decide the cost benefit of what the revenue is, and then how much, you know, we'd lose as a town of conservation stuff and how much we gain as use of water, and then split some of that. I, I, I applaud them for always looking for sources of revenue to continue preserving lands in this town. I, I agree though, I think it's a little early to do any sort of formal vote on it.
I, I would say that's fine. It's a long road to where we're going with this, with Lot Six. Um, however, I did want to make you aware that when I first got on the select board, the Conservation, um, was requesting money to, from, um, yeah. Boundless Adventures.
Oh, the rents.
Boundless Adventure rents, ever since, you know, they came to Berlin. And, you know, at that time, it was no. So they have been asking, and they've been very patient, and they, and so, you know, wherever we decide, I think, you know, it's, I think it's something that could be on the table um, when, um, we get a little closer to acquiring the land.
And we don't have any rent money from Boundless Adventures, so there's nothing to give today.
Well, so far, right.
Right, right.
Today, there's nothing to give, so.
Yeah, we got our first rent payment in some point in the future, right?
After we buy.
Buy it, which is now held up by this whole CR process in Article ninety-seven.
It'll be a year from now.
So a year from now, so the Sennys just get to keep all that money now?
Unfortunately.
So because we haven't sold the land yet, we've not closed on it, that means we still get the fifty-one thousand for not building, uh, senior housing, and we still get fifty percent of the money?
No, that's not in the fourth modification.
Right, but the, but we've not completed, I mean, it's been signed, but the, their end of it, giving us the land, hasn't happened yet.
That is correct, but that was part of the negotiation, that we had waived in the fourth modification, so.
We, we waived.
So it's in their no interest, so they decided to take twenty-seven years to actually get us Six A.
No, there is interest.
Then, then the, the fifty-odd thousand of Boundless Adventure rent, they just get to keep.
So, one of the things we're working on is a modification for, um, the December town meeting on closing date. Um, and until we are the owners of the property, that is the current agreement. They did say they were open to having the conversation, so is there a possibility that we could?
Fifty percent to a hundred percent. Somehow, we're getting zero percent. And so somehow, in this mess, we went from getting half the rent to none of the rent, which was not any of the agreements. At no point did we agree to none of the rent.
Agreed. So unfortunately, the issue is the CR on the property and the fact that the town cannot hold the CR concurrently um, as the ownership of it, and the fact that Article ninety-seven has gotten much more onerous in the past couple of years.
And you've seen, you've seen the email from Chris asking to meet with us.
Yeah, he wants to meet, so.
Why, why don't we pick that maybe as a subject to just talk to them about?
Yep, I think that is a.
And then also.
Good idea.
See if there's anything else that, um, we need to talk to them about, about, uh, before town meeting in December.
Yep.
To me, that should be a public meeting. I think it's owed to the town to hear directly from them and not to, not to be, oh, we had a meeting and they said one, two, three, and we responded with four, five, six.
Negotiations are generally not public.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, cause even if they were here, we're doing a negotiation at this meeting with them, it would be an executive session and not part of the public record anyway.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, I think we're in this.
We can relay.
Right, but unfortunately, I think we're in this bind because that was just a giant hole that was missed, was that whole CR, and it wasn't until legal looked at it and went, oh yeah, by the way, so one step forward, eighty-five steps back.
I, I don't think it's on the Sennys to have done the research on the CR.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying with this, it's, and as Scott said, we've gone from half money to no money, so, until whenever this passes. All right, well, is what it is. So we will hold on the conservation request because there's nothing to give?
Well, I, I mean, you may want to let Conservation know that, um, we'll discuss it again in time.
Right. We could also let them know there is no current rent from the, the.
From Boundless.
Boundless Adventure, and so.
All right, that's dead horse beaten, so let's move to, uh, vote to open the December ninth, twenty twenty-four special town meeting warrant with a close date of October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion to second, nothing really else to discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right.
And in our folder is the list of fifteen things that have been sort of suggested out there. I'm sure some of them, obviously all of them need wording and other stuff like that.
All right, so then the next up, Kristen, is, well, vote to approve the state election warrant.
Yes, this is a request from the town clerk to have the select board approve the warrant for the upcoming, um, state election on November fifth, which is a Tuesday. And the hours would be seven AM to eight PM here at the town offices.
I'll make this motion continually, the things that we have no say in but have to vote on.
I know.
I know.
I think are silly and waste of time, but I will, I so move.
Second.
All right, no further discussion is needed. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything to sign?
There is, on my desk. I forgot to bring it. We're all gonna get it when we're done.
Yeah, we'll all run down and get it. All right. Um, liaison, updates, boards, questions? Scott?
No, I mean, uh, the Housing Trust did do site visits of four town tax law, but nothing more than I've already discussed.
Awesome. Chris?
Um, uh, I'm just, I'm just gonna ask, I don't, I don't have any, um, questions or liaison update, but I'm gonna use this time just to, um, could an email be sent to board members, um, when items are added to the Google Drive after Friday? Can, can you just let us know? Cause if I do my stuff on Friday or Saturday, you look at the, uh, the drive, and like, tonight I didn't know that there was something put in there from fire. If you could just let, let us know. Or if you want to pick Saturday, that's fine too. Um, I, you know, just, you know, so we're not checking every single day.
Sure.
All right. Um, I also, in talking to Kristen, um, her contract will be up on June thirtieth of next year. And I would like to offer the board, um, that I'd be happy to work on it with her.
I think that's a chair responsibility.
Okay.
I think it's, I can't imagine thinking of something that's happening next year, and I, I know that we should be working on it sooner than, than that.
You will be working on our annual report too.
We'll start absorbing everything in May.
I can multitask.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, my brain can't comprehend something that far out. Who should lead it? I don't really have a lot of opinion on it.
When we, when we did negotiations with teachers, I was telling this to Kristen, when it was set to expire, like, the following June, you, you started the June before.
I, I totally agree that we probably should be working on it now, it's just the concept of it is.
So that's why I was thinking about it, and I thought, you know.
I appreciate bringing it up, otherwise, cause I, I would hate us to be behind the eight ball on it, and, you know, again, starting in, what, March, town meeting will absorb everything going on from then until at least the end of May.
Well, and there's a deadline of March for the board to notify me if they intend to renew or not.
Right.
Otherwise, there is a payout.
Yep.
Which I, I'm open about, cause I don't think you should have to do that. Just say yea or nay.
Yep.
And that's fair to everybody, cause it gives everybody time.
So, no?
I, I mean, I think we should start it, then I guess if the chair wants to do it, it's the chair's prerogative, I think.
I guess.
I'll do it.
Just trying to take something off the table for you.
Nah, I like doing stuff like this.
So do I.
All right. So Kristen, I'll set up some time with you.
I don't, so it's easy for that to, like, you know, I don't need to be part of all of that.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else?
No.
All right. Um, blah, 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 I don't have much. Um, Concoms checking along. Um, oh, an interesting thing with the Wheeler Pond, AKA Bonazzoli. Um, the family continues to work for, um, a grant, um, to look at the, the design of that, but a question came up about who owns the land under the water? up about who owns the land under the water? So, um, they're trying to figure that out. Now, will Bonazzoli give the land to the town? I don't know. Will Bonazzoli keep the land? I don't know. Uh, concom.
Why, why, why are you thinking about this?
Because it came up at concom. And they had posed, uh, the question to their group about, was there any interest in doing anything with the land? And again, it was
They were trying to give the land
Yeah.
As it was, to the town.
We don't want that land.
Yeah, no, we don't want that land as is, because I'm sure that
There's a munitions factory next to it as well, that potentially could have some, you know, issues with that.
Yeah.
Right, and you have brown, potential brownfield runoff and stuff like that, so that was just a question that they came up, that they're, the family is trying to figure out who owns the land under the water, and then of course
It is a very interesting question.
Right, and then their next question will be what they want to do with it. Um, there was mixed reaction with concom. Some wanted to leave it as is, turn it into just a wildlife, run free. Um, others wanted to maybe put in some type of park, but again, um, that's years out by the time they get everything done, and it drains and all that gross disgusting wet water lily stuff runs off to where it should be, but, um, that was just interesting that came up. Maplewood, they did confirm that there were no new imports. Uh, Highland Ridge, they're going to ask Pat Gardner to go back in and review, um, some items, potentially remove some silt fences. CSX is all good. They cleaned up their nastiness, uh, and they went through the, initially, uh, the conservation restriction for you can't call it, the 72 Carter Street purchase, you have to call it Powder Hill, Powder House Hill, because 72 is the address of the house that is not part of the agreement. And they were talking about, uh, trail maintenance, Brewer Road, uh, and then the Lester Ross Dam, and also parking for, on Lyman, for Mount Piska, what to do with that driveway, and also continued discussion of how far are you going to go back, how many spaces you're going to put in, where's the money to come from, or what are you going to do? Do you put in a little peace garden, as they called it? So, um, they have lots to ponder and come up with, but that's all that. That's all I got. All right. Um, so, a question for the board before we go. I know that there were some executive session minutes that were passed out. Do we want to have a quick executive session at our next meeting, probably before, to do whatever we need to do with them and move on?
What are we talking about?
The executive session minutes that were passed out in email from Dee?
We have to vote on them
Yep.
In executive session.
I didn't
They worked for tonight.
No, they
No, I haven't seen anything like that.
Oh, they came out a couple of weeks ago?
Okay. I think there's one that got sent out, so we may want to give it a little bit of time to catch up on the rest of them. That's what I think, but yes, we should keep it on the radar.
What, what was the, the date of the executive session?
It was during the week.
I, I don't remember the email, that's all.
It was, it was a standalone executive session, I believe.
Yes, it was.
But it was a recent one?
Yep.
Yes, it was the last one we had.
Okay, well, just, um, put it in the group, and maybe when we have more than one?
Okay. All right.
It was October 2nd, maybe.
If we did an executive session, if it was before the meeting, I would still like to start at 6:30.
Yes, so that's
It does take me a moment to try to get here at 6:30, and so we can't do 6 o'clock starts.
Okay. All right.
Sometimes I can do that, but not all the time.
Yeah, I mean
All right. I just didn't know. I didn't know if you wanted, if we wanted just to pick them off as they came in, which would make it easier, but would also require
And you'd have another executive session
Right.
To approve that executive session.
If you have an executive session to approve minutes, then you have to approve minutes of that one. And I asked at one point whether or not we could approve minutes at the end of the meeting, because of the meeting is just approve the minutes of, so, so you could have had them written even before we started the meeting, and we could approve it. I was told we couldn't do that, so.
There's a week to you, you know.